Obviously.
Oh, there she is.
Is she? I want to make you. Did it? Did it? Well, it might take a little me figuring out the schedule. Yeah, good job. Good job. You're right on the ball.
I always will help.
Yeah, this is nine street.
Town of LaPelle, Indiana.
Live on our new YouTube page. When the media starts all on YouTube.
I think you're also.
No, I'm just saying, no.
Oh, two minutes. It takes me about, uh, it takes me not. Three feet. And that's in the same one, so.
Game three, that's my side.
It's seven o'clock, we will start the LaPelle Town Council regular meeting. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is the June nineteenth, twenty twenty-five, meeting at seven P M. Let me do a roll call.
Brian Robertson.
Here.
Gary Shutt.
Present.
Roger Faust.
Present.
Lindsay Washmouth, here. Chad Blake.
Here.
Okay, I need to amend the agenda. We need to add Sean Connolly with an insurance presentation. And an E and B paving project. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve those two amendments to the agenda.
I'll second.
Brian.
Yes.
Gary.
Yes.
Roger.
Yes.
Lindsay.
Yes.
Chad.
Yes.
Okay, for anything not on the agenda, now's the time for public comments.
I have a question.
Hang on, we got one coming up right now, since she's finished.
Hi, Alicia West. Um, I just had a couple of questions. I had a couple residents reach out to me today wanting to check in with you guys regarding the limb pickup with the recent storm from last night. Is there any way that they, they're wanting to know if there's any way that, should we call town hall? How should we handle it with the recent, you know, down limbs? How do you approach?
I was gonna bring it up tonight. Um, we were off today for Juneteenth. Tomorrow, we've got some bigger stuff that was across the road we need to clean up. So I'm hoping, uh, Monday and Tuesday of next week, give residents the weekend, kind of get stuff up to curb, and we'll, we'll get as much of this picked up as we can.
Awesome. So for the residents that have like big trees blocking.
Big, big trees that were the residents' trees are ultimately their responsibility. I can't pick up anything greater than four inches in diameter. It won't fit in the chipper. So we'll do limbs and small brush, but other than that, I can't do big stuff.
All right. And then I have one other question, just for some clarification. I was witness to a resident that lives at Fifth and John that had recently moved in the area. Um, as we know, that sidewalk is a main outlet to Ice Cream Plus. Um, I talked to Officer Buffington the other day about this, blocking the sidewalk. Um, two nights ago, there was a little kid that was charged by a dog, one of their six dogs that live in the house. I didn't bother calling these guys because I know they're busy, but at this point, um, what can we do to ensure the safety of our residents? Because at this point, as you guys know, as I've talked to you before, I'm proactive rather than reactive. And it's just a matter of time where a dog bites a kid. And then the town is looking at a possible litigation issue. So, just thinking ahead, like, what can we do to rectify the issue of, you know, loose dogs, things like that? I know these guys have got a lot on their plate, so I don't know, is there something else that we can do to help keep our residents safe within the community?
I'll have a conversation with legal and see if there's anything already on the books. Um, anything the police department can do.
Right.
That's just a discussion we'll have to have them figure out what we can and can't do.
But the dog, the dog was loose?
Yes, these dogs have ran loose off and on for the last month and a half that they've just recently moved in. And there's about five big dogs. And one of them is very aggressive. One of them came at a child the other day, um, as they were walking down to Ice Cream Plus. And my husband ran out and like stopped it. Um, and then there's another elderly couple that lives like right across the street from Donna K. Everybody knows where Donna K lives. But it, right across the street from her, and he was just trying to walk his elder, his, his elderly dog, and they came after them as well. I just see a big issue that, that neighborhood, our neighborhood has never been an issue, and I just see concern for residents that walk, especially in the summertime with softball, baseball, everybody goes down and celebrates Ice Cream Plus. You know, we have preschool kids from Trinity walking down to Ice Cream Plus, and it's just a concern, just something to maybe see if we can get a head up.
Yep, I am, we'll get all of that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir. You get place not to hurt him.
First time here, so I didn't know about protocol. Uh, my name's Todd, I'm, my wife and I own the LaPelle Laundry, but this is not about LaPelle Laundry. Um, I also sit on a board for a nonprofit that's based in Anderson. Uh, they recently acquired a grant to edu, to provide education for financial literacy and job readiness for kids and adults, uh, in Madison County. So we're gonna be actually delivering that here in LaPelle, probably at Andy Cole's Church, Daybreak Church. They have a great classroom there. I'm just throwing it out to the people and the, the folks here that, you know, we might ask for some town support, maybe advertising it, also have some businesses come in and talk to our students, um, and look for any ideas.
Either on the website or if you bring in like a flyer, we have a big bulletin board right inside the front door.
Okay.
We can put something on there, and then I can put it on our Facebook page.
We're like you guys, we're.
Oh, Town Hall, is that ten eleven or the main? Uh, at tenth and main. We moved from ninth and main, we're now at tenth and main. In the old First Merchants family. Okay?
Any ideas? Let me know, try to get, um, if you look us, look us up on LaPelle Laundry, you'll see a phone number if you wanna give us a call with ideas or anything like that, or people with us, or, um, anything you can provide these students for support, that'd be awesome.
Thank you.
All right.
Anyone else for public comment? All right, let's, uh, move on. Presentations, uh, event permit, class of two thousand five, LaPelle High School. Okay, we're gonna move on. Event permit.
You just have to look at it.
Hmm?
I don't think they have to be here, do they have to be here?
No. Does everybody look at one?
Well, I don't wonder if the presentation or if someone's here.
They're wanting to reserve a pavilion at the park, correct?
They've made the reservation at the park, they've already booked the shelter.
Okay.
So we're good there.
Yeah, they're expecting eighty to a hundred people, according to the permit.
And I didn't know whether she actually needed an event permit, but she, we had her do it just because of the amount of people that were gonna be there. I thought it was wise that.
I'll make a motion to approve the special event permit for their class of two thousand five, LaPelle High School.
I'll second.
Brian.
Yes.
Gary.
Yes.
Roger.
Yes.
Lindsay.
Yes.
Chad.
Yes.
Class.
That's the first one.
Hey, the event permit for Bethel Baptist.
It's another outdoor. On the park. Um, because we, we don't have anything against gas growth being brought into the park to, I don't know. But.
Since they wanted to do that.
No. But they've been doing it before. That's why I'm upset. So. Yeah. I don't know, I don't see a problem with this.
Uh, I'll entertain a motion for the Bethel Baptist.
Yes.
Uh, this one, one of the shelters already booked that day by a different person that's not on the application.
Okay.
So I don't know if it's, if they're together or not. So I don't, like, if they're winning the entire park, one of, the main shelter is already booked.
Do you know what time the other one is?
All day.
Okay. I just saw they had a time on this one, so that's why I was asking.
Someone's already reserved the main shelter all day on that date.
Is that also during village fair?
No, this one's not.
Okay.
We can let him know when we call in that that one's booked immediately.
Yeah, it doesn't say how many pavilions, just using pavilions. I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Brian.
Yes.
Gary.
Yes.
Roger.
Yes.
Lindsay.
Yes.
Chad.
Yes.
Event permit, Farmer's Market.
I'm here for that one, if you do have any questions.
Sure, tell us about it.
Um, it's the same thing they've done last year, they just moved it to the library parking lot this year, food trucks, vendors. Um, I don't think they're needing to close these streets down that first Sunday, they didn't even, so everything will be in the parking lot or along the street facing the library, if that makes sense, not the road, but facing into the property for the food trucks.
Anybody else have any questions? I entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve the Farmer's Market permit.
Second.
Proved in the second.
Either one of your eyes, we touch the exact same time.
Brian.
Yes.
Gary.
Yes.
Roger.
Yes.
Lindsay.
Yes.
Chad.
Yes.
Hey, event permit for the LaPelle Optimus Club. It's the five K. Kids run.
Just some coordination with the police, right? Calling. Huh? On closing some roads and streets and stuff? I don't know.
The village fair.
Yeah. They, yeah, they usually, yeah. Same route, everything's the same. I'll have her get with you.
I'll get with you.
We actually, and we went ahead and talked, um, they had some people drive through. They're not gonna have the big arch thing this year because that guy went out of business, but, uh, I talked to Brandon, and we're gonna use some of our vehicles to block Main Street so that people don't, they were driving in the grass up on the sidewalk trying to get around that as the kids were running down the road, so, yeah, last year, so. I'll have her get a hold of that later.
I will. I entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Brian.
Yes.
Gary.
Yes.
Roger.
Yes.
Lindsay.
Yes.
Chad.
Yes.
New business. Coming well, uh, additional warranty for Fifth Street. This should actually be. They are going to fix.
Nope.
He said if we needed him, I could call him.
Essentially, they are going, they have a warranty issue on Fifth Street, Fifth and Walnut, correct?
Yes. Uh. All the way through to the central.
Yes. They are going to rework all the joints, and then. I believe it was all of the fuse pipe, wasn't it?
They're gonna, they're gonna go in, open cut, cut all the fuses out, and then they're gonna re.
The additional warning was for all of the fused pipe.
Yes, yes, and it got a, an extra.
Two years.
Two years on that.
Yes. Yes. That's what we're looking for, on that one.
So, does it seem like any questions about their warranty, what they're gonna do with the warranty?
This is the one that's.
Yes. And it's broken.
No, I just remember what I was talking about.
The few joints every time.
Yes.
I'm with the contractor, if you guys have any questions.
You're gonna, you're gonna do the, you're gonna cut the whole street, I mean, or just after each joint?
There's, there's three joints that haven't been repaired on the line that you guys have had problems with, so we're gonna replace those three joints, and that's all we're gonna do for now. It should, it should alleviate any of the problems for in the future in that area. And then, yeah, there's an extended warranty for all the fuse pipe we got put in by our subcontractor.
There's no questions, I'll entertain a motion to accept the warranty and the warning work.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Brian.
Yes.
Gary.
Yes.
Roger.
Yes.
Lindsay.
Yes.
Chad.
Yes.
Barrett Key, insurance quote.
Hey, everybody. Hey, my name is Barrett Key. I am from Clark Insurance, and I wanna thank, first of all, thank you guys for letting me come up and present this to you. I wanna thank Teresa for working with me and helping get the information, uh, and a good time we were to be able to do this. Um, I have put a book in front of all of you. It is seventy-three pages. It is quite a bit to look over, and we're not gonna go over that today. On top of that, I put a summary sheet, it's two pages. Um, again, I'm gonna let you guys read that and, uh, ask me questions at a later time if you need. I put my card on there, um, there's a lot to go over. I will say the quarter's from Selective. If you don't know much about Selective, they are in the municipality field, and they're very good at what they do. Uh, just in the area, they write Alexandria, Pendleton, Greenfield, Fishers, and I can keep naming about thirty more. Um, they're, they're great schools. Again, what they specialize in is not only understanding the claims municipalities have, but mitigation before the claims even arise. Uh, they have education seminars for the fire, for the police, uh, they have seminars for abuse in West Nation. Uh, it's, it's really about keeping the claims, um, just keeping them from happening before they happen. Education and getting, uh, some seminars here for, again, the, the town, just to understand what we need to do to, to keep, uh, these claims from happening. I'm just random, sorry about that. Um, also, you wanna get me? Uh, yeah, I'm Barrett. Uh, most of you know me. I taught here for ten years. I live twenty-five minutes away. Um, I'm on plenty of boards in Alexandria, very familiar with the city. Uh, I do commercial insurance, and I'm involved in my community quite a bit, just like I used to be involved in this one. Uh, my cell phone is right there, you guys can call it whenever you want, and I'm always available. At the end of the day, again, I, I can't speak more than I already have about Selective. If you're looking for insurance municipalities, I, I think it's the best, obviously. Um, and you get me, and I think I'm pretty good at what I do. And more importantly, I'm available. And I know most of you, and that's the most important thing when I talk to you, that you guys need is just, hey, when we have a problem, hit me, call. You call me first, and then we'll figure it out. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you. Sean Connolly, another insurance quote.
Hi, good evening. I'm Sean Connolly, I own Myers Insurance and Real Estate, and I'm gonna keep this short because we have a Pacers game tonight. So, in front of each of you should be a summary letter that I put together. Very clear on the front is what the current premium is, is, and what the renewal premium is going to be. We have a twelve percent increase in premium from last year to this year. The reason that's going up is because we've added some property coverage. Property coverage in the town of LaPelle has gone up about twenty-five percent because you have a new town hall. We also increased coverage on the garage next to the police station to make sure that that's properly covered as well. A few other things is we over, we updated the vehicles on there, and we made sure that the new two thousand twenty-four leaseback is on there as well. Work comp is about the same. I actually expect that at audit time, the town's going to get some money back, uh, because I think the payroll being used on it is a little bit high right now, and I think you guys have had some employee count changes as well that will bring that down. Um, if you look through the letter, you'll see that the town has four open claims right now that are being worked by Astra's, the current insurance company, and IPET is the work comp provider. There are four claims that are being worked right now, they're being processed. Uh, you can see the details of those in the summary letter. And then I also list out some things of why I feel Astra may stand out ahead of other insurance companies, and why the town should consider a renewal with that. Um, finally, the one thing that is not included in our quote that I feel the town should consider is a cyber liability and ransomware policy. I've already just today started working with Teresa to collect the data so that we can get an idea of what that is and present that to the town council as well. I know that Madison County has some problems with that at recent times, and other municipalities have, so it'd be a good idea to consider some sort of coverage for that for the town. Uh, finally, um, I, I know some of you may not know me, but I do own a business here in LaPelle. We employ all people from LaPelle and Pendleton. I asked that maybe that'd be something to go into your consideration as well as we move forward on services. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sean.
Uh, next, K R M Architectural Proposal.
Hi, I'm Matt Yates with K R M Architecture. Um, we had submitted a proposal, um, to do a study to see, uh, what it would take and what it would cost to, um, develop the new, um, building, to the new town hall building to see, um, what it would cost to make it work, so, um, we sent the, you have the proposals in front of you?
Teresa, I sent that to you, did you get it sent out to everybody, or?
I thought you had everybody on.
No, I'm sorry, I did not.
Sorry.
Sorry, I got copies here, thank you.
Even better.
So what our, our proposal is, is basically we would go in and we would scan, um, the existing building, um, create existing plans, um, and then survey existing mechanical, electrical plumbing systems, and then we'd develop those options and, uh, provide basic sections and types of construction. And then come back here, review it, the cost estimate, and code review, and, um, that fixed fee would be around seven thousand dollars. And then, once we establish a budget, um, based on the work that we agree upon, um, we would do a fixed fee of three percent of the construction budget, uh, to develop those drawings and then take them out to bid. Typically, you know, um, I'm from, um, this community, we've, our office is in, um, Anderson, Indiana, we've been there for forty years. I live now in Noblesville, but, um, again, from Frankton, so, um, typically you would see probably around four or five percent. We just really appreciate what you guys do and, and we've worked at the library, so, um, that's what we propose, so. Any other questions, I'm here.
Thank you.
Yeah.
One question. You would, you would look at it structurally to see if there's, what, what we can remodel?
Yeah, it kinda already did and it, it pretty, pretty, looks pretty simple, um, that's kinda why it also lower fee, cause it's in good condition at the first, again. We were there for about an hour walking through, looking at some things, and, uh, you know, steel, steel on the basement level and, and concrete floors, um, it. Chemical systems look like they worked and were running in, in good shape, brand new, so, yeah, I think you guys got a pretty good building, uh, at first glance, bones and all that, so. Yeah, we would evaluate all that at a higher level, look at the roof, see, again, the use of the roof, didn't look at that too much. But, uh, and look at all that and kinda give you advice on what you can do, maybe like a menu of items to get you to where you need to be or where you wanna be, so.
So the seven thousand dollars, basically get you guys to go in, scan everything and develop the floor plan and see what you can.
Yeah, and, yeah, I think in there, you know, if you guys wanna do a public meeting or invite people in, get input, or your committee, just meet with them, you know, and then developing some pretty images for you guys to go ahead and sell to the community, so you get, so you get excited, and get them excited, get them all board, cause sometimes these things can, can, can get a little, uh, controversial quick, so.
Yes. Uh, I would entertain, uh, does anybody else have any questions? I would entertain a motion to, uh, start the process with the three D scans at fixed fee of seven thousand dollars. Develop our options.
Did you make that or?
Entertaining.
I'll second it.
Brian.
Yes.
Gary.
Yes.
Roger.
Yes.
Lindsey.
Yes.
Chad.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Gotta get this started. Miss Consultants, you asked utility information.
Sent this, uh, email on, uh, to. Uh, for the roundabout, we have to have a working agreement, cause they're gonna be using several. I'm sorry.
Not yet.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
All right, in the, uh, information I've given you, it's basically a timeline, um, based on when we received the appraisal. And Evan will have to look at this timeline, make sure it's good, that it's, uh, something that, uh, we're working with another community on, and I used basically the same dates. And then looked at your council meetings. The, um, decision, couple things to highlight, decision on the, uh, utility bidder probably needs to happen, uh, next month at your July council meeting. Then we need to do a thirty-day notice and have a public hearing in your August council meeting. And then, there's a first read and a second read and adoption. So all that's laid out in that, uh, document. Anybody have any questions on the timeline? Or anything that was in that email?
So the July meeting, we need to make a decision on if. Nothing died.
Yep, just information.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Uh, next on the agenda, EMB bid for a paving project. Uh, this is at Ninth and Woodward. It's a ninety by sixteen foot section. Gary, you've kind of, uh, went over this with EMB.
Yes, well, uh, this problem's been developing for a couple, three years now. The water stands in that corner, that intersection, and it keeps, and now we've got a huge hole, and it's falling apart, so. We looked at options on what to do, so, uh, one of the things was, since they're going to be in close proximity, uh, while they close off State Road thirteen in a couple of weeks, uh, they could come in and mill that out sixteen feet wide in front of the, uh, storage buildings and repave all that with eight inches of, uh, well, six inches of binder and two inches of surface. And build that up to where the water will not stand there and therefore not create such a problem, especially in the wintertime when it freezes. And, uh, it will help the traffic in that, at a, that intersection. It's been going on, even if we did it with our, the guys with our two tons at a time.
Well, I, I feel it about every time we go out, I'm asshole. It's, there's nothing for it to, there's nothing there for it to buy, too, so.
It needs to be completely rebuilt, so, and as you can see, it's only ninety-three hundred dollars, uh, well, ninety-three hundred and forty-five dollars, which, uh, we get some sort of a break because they're gonna be in the area. But we need to get this done, so I would, I will make the motion to approve the EMB paving project at Ninth and Woodward.
Second.
Brian.
Yes.
Gary.
Yes.
Roger.
Yes.
Lindsey.
Yes.
Chad.
Yes.
President, Mr. President, may I speak?
May.
Um, I would also, I've get, gotten a lot of complaints about Fourth and John. Um, I would like to see if, uh, Gary would ask them to go look at that as well.
Yes.
I mean, Ms. Trigune even came in and she said if her car bottoms out when she goes through that little spot, so.
I will talk with the, uh, paving representative tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
End dot working agreement, this is for the roundabout.
Yes, when we met with the folks with End dot, um, we pretty much come to an agreement. They are going to relocate the drainage pipe at their expense. Our sign is going to remain in its present position. Sometime between now and next spring, we're gonna have to take out those two street lights on the far end, north end. Um, but they're gonna be using our right-of-way for access, so when they do that, they need a working agreement with the municipalities. They also have one, they'll be working one up with the county because they'll be using county roads also. So, that's all that is, is a, okaying, a working agreement with them. They can use our right-of-way.
I'll entertain a motion for the End dot.
Yes.
Very good.
I'll entertain a motion for the End dot working agreement.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Who made the motion? Gary? Roger?
Yes.
Brian.
Yes.
Gary.
Yes.
Roger.
Yes.
Lindsey.
Yes.
Chad.
Yes.
Hey, we have no public hearings. Apartment reports, please, you are up.
Good evening, um, just a quick down then, run down, uh, obviously the call service, uh, five hundred forty-six this month. We're set at two, twenty-two sixty-one for the year, and this month we filed nineteen criminal charges. Uh, we've had an uptick of OWIs this month, we've had seven OWIs this month. So, and there was a few others that were also driving related, so majority of our charges this month, honestly, have been high-level vehicle, uh, charges. Personnel-wise, Officer Jackson and Officer Lee both moved into their second of three phases of their field training, and Officer Foster is continuing in his phase one. Uh, we had a tough month on vehicles. Uh, twenty-twenty-three Tahoe, air conditioning went out, we were three K past our warranty. Um, the parts and labor we, we got, I'm sorry, the parts that we purchased, um, come with a lifetime warranty. We got that in writing from, uh, Millard when they put that in, uh, and that's for the parts only, but it's better than what we had with the OEM. The twenty-two, twenty-two dash two F-150 had two ignition, well, we had a miss in the engine, had twenty, uh, two ignition coils that went out and needed to be replaced. And all the spark plugs were changed and that was not covered by the powertrain warranty. Uh, the twenty-two dash one F-150, um, we had an officer that was working an authorized ODE, which is all duty employment. Uh, his front two tires were damaged, however, he has already reimbursed the town and that money has went to the park treasurer and already been deposited into the lit continuing ed fund, so it's been reimbursed. And tires are already on the vehicle. Um, one thing I did not put on there, we also had the twenty Explorer, um, while avoiding getting hit by a semi, witnessed by one of our council members, he backed into a guide wire. Uh, we did take it to Miller's, we had it looked at to make sure, first of all, that it was still safe and operational. It's purely cosmetics, uh, it was thirteen hundred dollars, we're not gonna file an insurance claim basically for three hundred dollars. Being that it's cosmetics, I'm gonna hold off till the end of the year, if I have money left in the account at the end of the year, we'll bear it, if not, we'll move it to next year. Equipment per the contract with the Motorola's, uh, we're at a three-year mark, so we do our swap, we've got our new body cams and they were the newest. A whole lot of change for us, it still takes state interest, it'll take state media over, we've got them, so that contract has two years remaining. Big news for us, the Pendleton Police Department donated us, uh, four thousand dollar worth of Redman Training Equipment for Defensive Tactics. Officer Diaz is going to Defensive Tactics Instructor School next month, in, yeah, next month in July. Uh, so when he gets done with that, instead of us either having to make do with beg borrowing, whatever we gotta do, we are now ready to hit the ground rolling, sorry, didn't mean to scare everybody. Um, hit the ground rolling, um, huge donation, we appreciate it. Ultimately, what happened is AU closed, everybody I think was aware of that, AU donated it to Pendleton, Pendleton already had a complete set, they donated it to us, and it's almost brand new, we have to order one forty-seven dollar piece and make the set complete, so, huge, huge benefit. As far as the training area, we've already talked to the school, um, we'll be able to use their training area, their rest in that, to avoid having to purchase any of that, so. Basically, we just got into this for free, instead of me trying to figure out where I'm gonna come, get money and come begging to the council for extra money, so, we're good, that was a huge donation. Um, other than that, it's just been a busy month trying to get everything ready. Fourth of July, we've already talked with Ms. Pata, so we've got that set up, what the plan is, just so everybody is aware. Even if thirteen is not open, which who knows if it's gonna be open or closed, we're going to shuttle everybody down Brookside, down three hundred and coming next, that way, first of all, we don't have to worry about putting any permit, closing the State Road thirteen, and we don't have to have as much reliance on requesting outside support from such agencies like EMA or, or Edwood. We'll be able to do it internally, so, we should be set for the town fair, freight route's already been set. I've talked to Connie already, she's got a new route, whether that thirteen opens or closes, she's gonna maintain that route no matter what, it's gonna be a little bit shorter. Um, on Main Street, grade's still gonna be as long, and we just have to get the word out and get people out on line to view some of the grade, but, um, it's gonna be a shorter route, but, again, we're not, we're not crossing Tokyo. Any questions, Connie? Thank you.
Planning, we did not have much in planning. We adopted an application to vacate public ways, uh, alleys, things of that nature. The planning staff recommended some, uh, updates to be scheduled. They are doing a self-committing to come up with those fees. Pretty much all planning had. Utilities.
All right. Bear with me, I had a toothache this morning, so sometimes like, my words don't come out right. Um, we had a storm damage last night, uh, we have one town-owned tree, uh, that we're gonna have to take care of, pretty large tree there, High Pendleton Avenue. Um, we're gonna start working on getting that taken care of. And then the limb pickup, uh, we'll do the extra limb pickup probably Monday and Tuesday, cause with the heat that's supposed to come in at the beginning of the week, the afternoon might be a little warm. So just bear with us on that while we get as much up picked up as we can. Um, I got a quote for, um, as you guys know, for the Bill's Fair, we, uh, past couple of years we've rented, uh, where we've hired a street sweeping company to come in, uh, probably, they come in like early Friday morning, Friday night, and then Saturday night. That cost us about fifteen hundred dollars for about four hours of work from this company. I got a quote from Best Equipment, they rent street sweepers. I wanna propose renting a street sweeper, uh, from Monday to Monday, so we can, beginning half of the week, we can focus on the other streets in town that need to be swept, and then we'll have it for the Bill's Fair. Uh, the quote from Best to rent it for an entire week came out at four thousand dollars. We're at four thousand two hundred and ten dollars. For that, for an entire week, and I think we can get a lot of stuff done with it. We'll have it for the weekend for Bill's Fair, and I think we'll be able to do a little bit more thorough job than, than what we've been hiring now. So I just need, it's non-CBL trucks, anybody can drive, the guy that's on call can come in at night and when everything's over and sleep, and be ready for the next day, so. Yeah, the only thing we need, um, if this gets approved is we have to give Best a, it's a certificate of liability insurance, but, that's all they can do, so.
I'll entertain a motion to, and it's a street sweeper for seven days. What was the dollar amount again?
Four thousand two hundred and ten dollars.
Four thousand two hundred and ten dollars for the week.
I'll make that motion.
Brian.
Yes.
Gary.
Yes.
Roger.
Yes.
Lindsey.
Yes.
Chad.
Yes.
Um, the new dump truck, I expect to be able to pick it up this week, uh, we've gotten the VIN number, I've gotten with Teresa about having it added to insurance before we pick it up. Um, it should be ready to go this week. Bill's Fair, we've already started planning, getting everything ready for that, so, we're on topic. You guys have anything for me?
We do have, still have enough good barricades for Bill's Fair?
Yeah, we rebuilt a bunch of them last year, uh, before we put them up, kind of, put some of them together, then we went through a bunch during the winter, had to rebuild some, but, yeah, the, the old wooden ones are pretty sturdy.
Yes, they are.
Yeah.
I do, Brandon.
Yeah.
About four weeks ago, I asked you to start taking some water samples from meters. Random, random days of the week. Right now, there's been approximately forty water tests done.
Yep.
At the meter. At the meter. What is your summary on those water tests? Did we have any bad ones?
I haven't had anything that's been over the norm. I mean, everything's been, so the way I set it up is on our GIS map, we go out and geotags your location, we put the date and the time and where we got the sample from. So if it's prior to the meter, post the meter, or if it's like an outside, it's picking. And then we take a picture of the water, the water sample, and then we test it for chlorine, we test it for iron. I haven't had anything that's been high on iron or low on chlorine or dirty water or any, I haven't had a single one yet, so.
Thank you.
Yep. I wouldn't encourage, encourage residents that if you do have dirty water, the best thing to do is to call a town hall at that time. And as long as it's between 7:00 and 3:30 when we're here, I'd like to come out and test it at the meter when it's, when it's current. Because that gives you the best, the best results, kind of figure it out, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Uh, Parks.
I don't have an update. Do you have anything for me?
I, do I have any? RDC?
We met in our regularly scheduled meeting earlier today. We have paid for our required tip reporting to be done by Reedy Financial, and we did have a member resign. So we do have an opening on the redevelopment committee. If anyone is interested, please get an application turned in to Town Hall. And once we determine who is responsible to appoint that position, whether it be the council or redevelopment commission, or president, or any of those kind of things, we will get that appointed.
Thank you.
Office.
I don't have a whole lot. I just have one thing, actually. My ILMCT school, usually it's in May. This year, they've moved it to August and have moved it to French Lick. It will be August the 10th through the 13th. Darn it. Just want to make you guys aware of that, but we should be fine. We've got two other people that work there now, so.
Okay, let's move on to claims. Anybody have any questions on the claims? Any kind of motions to approve claims as presented?
I'll make that motion. I'll second.
Brian?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Chad?
Abstain.
Appropriation report.
No, I just, I emailed you guys all each updated appropriation and fund report. Should be in your emails.
Anybody have any questions on that? Okay. Approval of claims.
It's written on twice. I've got to take it off there and I keep forgetting.
I thought there was one of these we had there for twice. Approval of minutes from January 16th, March 20th, and May 15th. Anybody have any questions on those?
Yes, yes. Yes.
I'll entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
Make that motion.
Brian?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Chad?
Yes.
And just so you guys know, that catches up finally, the minutes for the town council. Except for there may be a missing special, but I'll go back through them all now and make sure that I thought all of them after all this time.
Thank you very much. Okay, approval of allowance dockets for May. Anybody have any questions on those? No, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Brian?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Chad?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Councilwoman comments and concerns? Anybody?
I just have a couple of things for general public. One, the requirement for the broadcast recording and storage of our meetings that kicks in on July 1st. We are currently broadcasting our first meeting live on YouTube on our new Town of LaPelle, Indiana YouTube channel, where the video will be recorded and will stay. We have a, later this year, our new website will get launched that will be at the .gov website level that will also link and have all of those meetings connected to it, so. We're working on making it so that we can livestream simultaneously to YouTube and Facebook. The test earlier during redevelopment didn't go very well, but we will eventually get to where it's on both locations. But it's a great thing for technology here overall.
Chad, thank you for your efforts on that. I know you've been working on this for a while. Anybody else?
President, can I make just a quick comment real quick? You should have not forgotten. Captain, remind me. I mean, I know it's in, in town and I know quote unquote it's doing their job, but obviously last night, we had a lot of road closures. We had trees down. I just want to thank the utility departments on the record. Within an hour, they had all the trees cleared, roadways opened up and running again, and I appreciate that.
Okay, our next scheduled meeting will be July 17th, right here at 7:00 PM.
Yes.
We also need to schedule a special meeting for insurance. Does Wednesday next week, the 25th, at 6:00 PM work for everyone?
Wednesday, the 25th, you say?
Yes.
What's the date?
25th.
I think so.
Uh, we'll go ahead and do that. When at Town Hall, we can set up our folding chairs and that table.
Yep.
For that.
Yeah, this is just for the insurance.
If anybody wants to come, they can come. Yeah, it'll be open to the public with a special meeting.
Okay, uh, make a motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.